Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the June 4, 2024 City Council Special Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Wagner. Zigorowski.
Here.
Ariaga.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Goff.
Here.
Balakir.
Here.
Krampitz.
Here.
Shamsky.
Here.
Kuchain. Labrie.
Here.
Bill's on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Kuchain.
Bill, you are muted.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Costello.
On Zoom.
Here.
Twelve present.
Thank you. Participating this evening on Zoom, we have Counselor Bill Kuchain for City Councilors. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chicopee is broadcasting live and for future broadcasts, this meeting on Chicopee TV. Is anyone else in the audience or on Zoom video or auto-taping this meeting? Please state your name and reason for doing so. Seeing none, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Mayor John View for presentation of the Mayor's Briefing.
Thank you, President Laflamme. Sorry, just let me silence my phone. I didn't realize it wasn't.
Yes, if everybody could silence their phones. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, esteemed members of the City Council. I have numerous orders in front of you, and I'll dwelve into them. The first order says, "Order that the City Council accept a donation in the amount of $300 from Colleen Bates to the Chicopee Police Department." Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass General Lodge, Chapter 44, Section 53A. As you can see from the background information, there's a letter. That letter explains that the Police Department has received a generous donation from Colleen Bates. Colleen, if you're watching, thank you for your generosity and support of the Chicopee Police Department. Any question about Mayor's Order 1? Well, thank you for your consideration. We'll move on to Mayor's Order 2. It's an appropriation of $10,000 to the following-named account, DPW Highway Expense Account for Street Signs, from the available funds in the Highway Salary Account for Highway Maintenance Man. As you can see from the background information, I know that our Superintendent Elizabeth Batista is joining us remotely. They've run out of money. There's been many requests for signs throughout the city, and this will get us to the end of the year until we get to the new fiscal year for 2025's budget. And Superintendent, anything you want to add?
No, you've covered it all.
Any questions about Mayor's Order 2? Counselor Shamsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. How much does the average sign cost to put up?
He wants to know how much the average sign costs.
The average sign is cost between $150 and, I think, $200, depending on the size.
Okay, thank you.
And that's including the sign itself and the post.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any questions about Mayor's Order 2? Our comments, thank you for your consideration. We'll move on to Mayor's Order 3. It's the appropriation of $265,113.44 to the following-named account, DPW Highway Special Account for Snow and Ice Removal from the Available Funds and the Undesignated Free Cash Account. I don't, I'm pretty sure there is background information, but let me just explain, we've had a, fortunate to have a mild winter with just a few storms of significance, and that's the appropriation that's needed. It's no secret, we only budget $100,000 a year for snow and ice removal because it's always all over the place, and we always ask the City Council to approve the supplement for that right at the end of the year. Superintendent, anything you want to add?
Just that continues to decrease with each year. It seems like the weather is just more mild. I believe this was less than last year.
And I'll take a moment to commend our DPW for making sure our streets are safe during those crazy storms and always pre-treating and making sure our roadways are safe.
Thank you.
Any questions about the snow and ice appropriation? Thank you for your consideration. Move on to Mayor's Order 4. The Mayor's Order 4 is an appropriation of $3 million to the following-named account, Reduction of the 2025 Fiscal Year Tax Levy from the Available Funds and the Undesignated Free Cash Account. So it's like we've done last year, we're putting $3 million towards tax relief. The financial team meets very frequently, and I want to commend the auditor, the treasurer, the assessors for, and the collector for the discussions that we have about where we stand financially, and we feel it's in the best interest of our community moving forward to try to reduce that tax levy by putting $3 million towards tax relief. We have the ability to do it, so we're going to. Any questions about the appropriation? I want to thank you for your consideration. I know the taxpayers will thank us, too. Mayor's Order 5, it's the appropriation of $2 million to the following-named account, Treasurer's Special Account for OPEB from the Available Funds and the Undesignated Free Cash Account. So what OPEB is, and I'm just going to quickly, it's an unfunded liability, and the state has asked municipalities to fund that liability in their retirement, and OPEBs stands for Other Post-Retirement Employee Benefits, mainly health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance. These benefits are the city's portion that we have to pay, like I had mentioned, and the city owes these benefits to our retirees, and we have, again, an unfunded, it's not a mandate, but it is a liability, and I know that Treasurer Laflamme is here. We typically budget $100,000. In the past, last year, we did $2 million towards trying to get that to be a self-supporting account, and we are pretty far behind. It's great for our bond rating, it's great for us financially when they evaluate us when it comes to that bond rating, and I know that Treasurer Laflamme, I'll defer to her, can give you a better explanation of why we're, as a financial team, have decided that it's in our best interest to put $2 million into the OPEB account.
So I think you explained it pretty well. It's our obligation, it's our commitment to our employees. Currently, we do pay-as-you-go. The state, as the mayor said, mandated the trust, and we created that trust and didn't follow through with committing us to a funding schedule, but it is really important that we take this seriously. It does help in on our bond rating. Every rating call I get, that's the one thing they ask. They see the past that we have committed, you know, a couple of million here and there. It's, you know, up to you to authorize this, but it does help with a favorable rating. And I really just, it's a fiduciary responsibility for us, you know? We have a huge unfunded liability, so I think we should start funding it. Down the road, the state probably will mandate it, but doesn't say we shouldn't start now with commitment to our obligations. Any questions?
Yeah, Counselor Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor Wagner, sorry. I'll defer to Counselor Balakir. Counselor Balakir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. A quick question. With this item and a previous one, do we know, Mayor, how much we might have in the free cash account?
We do. I actually brought it. With all the orders in front of you tonight, we would have just under 5.5 million in free cash. That will be transferring that into the stabilization account at the end of the year. And that includes the agenda item for capital needs as well. All set, George?
Yes, sir. Yep, thank you.
Sure, Counselor Wagner.
Thank you. I just have to ask, how far short are we on the OPEB fund so far?
I'll take a shot at that one. So we're no different than our neighboring communities. We're probably about $250 million unfunded liability. We got, we put in about $5 million. It's in a long-term investments. But yeah, so we're similarly with some of our communities, some are put more in, some put less in, so we're right around there.
Yeah. I was looking at some of that data beforehand, and that, you know, tracks pretty well. I think one of the only real big communities to be fully up to date on their OPEB is Watertown, so kudos to them. Hope we can get there someday.
We may. One of our goals is we're funding our regular retirement, and we're doing very, very well with that, so in a couple of years, that'll be fully funded, and whoever the mayor is at that time, I'm hoping they consider putting that money from our budget currently to the OPEB because it is our responsibility. That's the goal that the financial team suggests.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Any other questions about Mayor's Order 5? Well, thank you for your consideration. Mayor's Order 6 is the appropriation of $3,000 to the following-named account, Purchasing Special Account for the Central Photocopier from the Available Funds and the Undesignated Free Cash Account. As you can see from the background information, that there is a need in the purchasing department to cover copy paper and other things to get us to the end of the year. Any questions about the $3,000 request? Thank you for your consideration. To the City Council, you hereby notify that I have this day appointed Artis Carv of Chicopee as a member of the Commission on Disability to serve in such office for the term expiring on the 1st of June 2027, to which appointment I ask the confirmation of your honorable counsel. Artis is here with her family, and she wanted to just come, I don't know if you want to say hello or just give a wave. She's very interested in serving on the Commission on Disability. We had an interview, and I highly recommend her, looking forward for her added value to that commission, and I want to thank you for volunteering your time to the Commission on Disability and getting involved. Any questions about that appointment? It is a new appointment, so thank you for your consideration. The moment a long time awaiting, Mayor's Order 8. We had ordered that the City Council endorse the City of Chicopee Comprehensive Plan in Vision or Chicopee 2040 and the Action Plan for Implementation. I know our city planner is here. I have actually provided with you, this is something that's been in the making for quite a long time, and I've also included, and I mentioned to you probably about a month ago that we were bringing it forward to ask the City Council for endorsement. The planning board has adopted it, and now appropriately, I would like to have the City Council endorse so that we can implement. And just a couple of things I wanted to highlight, I mean, this started back in 2019. There was many responses from the public, they were involved in many of our public functions to ask where they want to see the city of Chicopee in 20 years. And you'll see that there's eight chapters, and it talks about coming together, governing, getting around when it comes to complete and safe streets for all modes of travel, green infrastructure, thriving together, creating staff positions and economic development, and what new developments would look like, looking at environmental justice and promoting health and wellness, and there's just so much in this plan. I highly recommend you all read it if you hadn't already, and certainly, I'm a very strong proponent for the endorsement of it by the City Council because once that happens, we can implement it. We'll put an implementation committee together, and we'll be working to, and again, a lot of these things in here we're already doing, so I just want to be clear, a lot of them we're already doing, and we're just going to enhance that. And I know the city planner is anxious to talk about this, been working on it for a very long time. City Planner Lee Puyott.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody, this is certainly a milestone for the city. It's actually a project that I started talking about when I first became the Acting Planning Director when Kate Brown retired, this being a critical document that the city needs. Just a little bit of background and context, the state zoning law requires all cities in Massachusetts to have an adopted comprehensive plan. It's always been referred to as unfunded mandate. However, when we started working on this back in 2019, we were one of only two cities that had not adopted a comprehensive plan. So our staff, our team in the planning department felt like we were in a little competition with another community trying to get this done. We were significantly impacted by the onset of the pandemic early on, initially took a pause, and then had to restructure ourselves so we could keep the project moving while we were all at home and keeping distance from one another. Regardless, even with that delay, our restructuring was successful, and we were able to interact with over 4,000 residents via mail-in surveys, online surveys, we had unique meeting-in-a-box projects that were set up for stakeholders to do with their families, and then to be able to send data back to us. We were very, very happy with the amount of participation we were able to receive during that portion of the process. As the mayor mentioned, there are eight chapters, eight topic chapters to this plan. That goes above and beyond the requirement in the state zoning regulations. Based on community feedback, there were certain topical areas that our planning team and our stakeholder committee felt were necessary to elaborate on in this plan, and those are the eight topic areas that the mayor mentioned. And the final section is an action plan, which breaks down priority tasks for each topic area into high, medium, and low priority to tackle over the next 20 years. And so upon completing a draft of that, we put a document out to the community for a 30-day public comment period. With that closed, we made some final tweaks that were presented to the planning board at one of their meetings in September of 23, so this past September, and with some additional edits that the planning board made, it was adopted at that meeting. To showcase our commitment to utilizing the plan as a tool moving forward, we thought it was appropriate and necessary to have the City Council review and endorse the plan. So as the mayor said, we can move forward with an implementation committee and starting to utilize this plan as the tool it's intended to be. So with that, I'll stop if there are any questions.
Yeah, President Laflamme.
Yeah, I have one for you, Mayor, and I actually, Lee first. Lee, is the comprehensive plan, is it out there for the public can see anywhere?
Yes, it is online. There's a website set up for it on its own, and there's also a webpage off of the planning department's site that links to it.
Okay. Has it been out there somewhere that the public can see that? I mean, I know you're saying where it is, but how do they know that they have an opportunity to review it?
So when we released it in August of last year, we created a link, there's a web address to the website that was released, and we used QR codes in the mayor's press release and on the planning department's materials that were sent out notifying individuals where they could find the plan. So access was given based on how we usually communicate with the public.
And that's the, this final plan that we have in front of us tonight is on there?
Correct.
Yeah, you all have a copy.
Right. So, Mayor, this year that we're going to be funding, I'm not saying I'm against it, I just need a little bit more information. I'd like to see if you could set up a special meeting of the City Council and Lee's office as soon as we can, if that's possible, so the public has an access to it, to see it. It's a lot of money, and actually, it's not even about the money, it's about the future. If some people, and I encourage the City Councilors to tell people in their ward, because I did have a couple of people I spoke to about it, but I think a special meeting of whoever you want on that, Mayor, just, we'll do it as soon as possible, and to review it and get some feedback from Lee on this. It would be appreciated.
Whatever the will of the City Council is. Like I said, I'm a strong proponent for adopting this plan.
Counselor Laflamme, just to follow up on that, I do have a slide deck that we utilize with the planning board that goes into deeper detail on each step of the planning process.
Perfect. So, Mayor, you'll set that up? Right, Mayor? You'll set that up?
Yes, we'll set up a special.
You'll have to do it.
Well, once you decide what you're going to do tonight, then we'll, if that's the order that's passed, okay? Then I'll obviously set that up immediately on whatever the will of the City Council is. Sure, Counselor Pinia Costello.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I want to commend Planner Puyott for putting this together. This was a lot of work, and it certainly is appreciated because it takes us with vision over the next 20 years. I do agree with Counselor Laflamme, though, in regards to having some sort of public hearing and have the public, if they wish, to come down and hear what this plan is. The planner has spent a lot of time and a lot of energy to put this together, and I think the public will benefit by his wisdom. Thank you.
Counselor Labrie.
Yes, to Lee, please. Lee, is there a price tag to this, or is it like as you go along, we'll find out if there needs to be funded, or do you have a cost in mind?
Sure. So this plan does not request the appropriation of any funds for anything whatsoever. It just gives recommendations and priority actions that the city should consider taking based on the topic areas and the public input that went into it. If the, in moving forward to implement it, if there are items that need funding, those would be projects individually that would come to the mayor with a likely request for funding through the City Council or my staff looking for funding sources outside the city, so grants and things of that nature. So there's no appropriations request with this. We just are looking for the City Council to endorse this essentially as a guide, particularly with regards to policy moving forward.
So it'll be basically pay-as-you-go?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Counselor Wagner, I'm sorry, I didn't see your two finger steps.
It's all right. You gotta get better at just doing this. So, Lee, I'm looking at this plan, and I read it when it first came out. I've been following this since you guys tried to get me involved when I was the student advisory council president, and I looked at other comprehensive plans that other municipalities have developed, and I think this is some really good work. I just, I have a couple of questions. With regards to the section entitled Neighborhood Corridors, when we're talking about revising the zoning code here, that's going to be a huge, huge project if we're going to bring the zoning code up to the 21st century. Do you guys plan to do all of that in-house, or would you require the help of an outside contractor for something like that, to come in and assist in the drafting of new zoning ordinances?
Yeah, that's a very good question, Counselor. For revamping of the zoning code, which is a strong priority in the plan, and even based on our experience in the office, we know we're struggling to utilize the code to permit contemporary development that we're seeing. We would require the guidance of outside council, so it would likely be some professional planners and land use lawyers that are generally hired to assist communities in revamping their zoning codes. And just for your information, based on the plan, and this being a sort of a long-term investment, assuming the code lives for about 30 to 40 years without needing a substantial rewrite again, we've made a capital request in our budget ask for the coming fiscal year to fund that based on our planning team's experience in other communities of our size. So we have an idea of what that cost would be, and we would review that if and when we're ready to move forward with that activity.
Thank you, Lee. My next question, so I know that the vehicle for these comprehensive plans, generally speaking, is the budget at large with financial orders spread in between as need be to cover extra expenses. You know, are you guys looking to have this, you know, is the budget that you guys are going to present in a couple of weeks, does that, you know, tie into this sort of comprehensive plan that has been developed, or, you know, like, is the budget going to be aligned with the goals that are set out here, even though we haven't, you know, really adopted it?
So the budget for the planning department is representative of what we anticipate for the coming year. I would say that the priority action for planning staff is to begin tackling the zoning and development regulations update effort, which is why we've submitted that capital request. But we haven't anticipated an increase in our budget to implement any portion of the comprehensive plan because most of what our staff would do for that would be part of our regular workload anyways. Now, I will say, the plan does touch on more than just the planning department. It's a citywide thing, so there are additional actions that planning would not be the lead on, but those would be addressed based on the recommended priority status as we start to put the gears in motion to implement, which is going to take some time to do anyways.
All right. Thank you. I suppose the question was more directed at the mayor, which I should have specified, but, Lee, thank you for the answer.
Any other questions or comments? Sure, Counselor Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This looks like a great piece of work. I know that there's a lot of time, energy, and effort that went into it, and I feel that this is an example of government being proactive and looking into the future. And as some of the counselors referenced, as we immerse ourselves deeper into this, I'm in agreement, if there's additional funding, we'll have to bring that to the forefront, but at least on the surface, I'm really glad that your office and planning has taken a look at this because things are changing out there, and that's the only way other governments are really going to do what they have to do. But thank you.
No, thank you. Just one last comment. So you get a wonderful comprehensive plan, but what the best part of having that plan is also it came with an implementation plan, and that plan involves, like I had mentioned earlier, creating a committee, and that committee is built up of stakeholders, I believe elected officials, and representatives of this community who will come together to help and work to implement this plan. And just for Counselor Wagner, we have not built any appropriations in the budget other than what was mentioned about zoning to move forward. Those requests would be coming to the City Council and asked for those appropriations as we move forward. So any other questions about Invision 2040? I want to say thank you for your consideration. And last order is Mayor's Order 9. It's the appropriation of $2 million to the following-named account, Stabilization Fund for Capital Budgeting from the Available Funds and the Undesignated Balance Free Cash Account. Every year, it's no secret that there are capital needs for equipment and other things in every department, and the Capitol Committee will be meeting very soon. I believe we meet right after we get through the budget, and we'll start determining the order of priority for the requests for capital needs. order of priority for the requests for capital needs. And this is the appropriation that we do annually, requesting the city council to allow us to buy those tools that the departments need to provide those services that we all expect. So any questions about the request? I want to say thank you. That concludes the mayor's briefing, and have a great meeting. Thank you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn. May I, also may I second to adjourn the mayor's briefing? Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegrowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Kuchain?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinaya Costello?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. The city council will resume its meeting at 7:15. Thank you. And now we'll stand for a moment of silence for those who protect us home and abroad. Thank you. I'd like to welcome our school department liaison, Sandra Perret, for being here this evening. If you folks and the committee, please mute your cellphones, that would be appreciated. Participating tonight on Zoom for city councilors is Counselor Bill Kuchain. City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
President Laflamme?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Zegrowski?
Here.
Ariaga?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Goff?
Here.
Balakir?
Here.
Crampits?
Here.
Shumsky?
Here.
Kuchain?
Here.
Labrie?
Here.
Pinaya Costello?
Here.
13 present.
Thank you. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chicago is videotaping this meeting live for future broadcasts. Is anyone in the audience or on Zoom videotaping this meeting? Please state your name and reason for doing so. Seeing none, we will move into public input. Public input is limited to three minutes or less. Is there anyone in the audience here or on Zoom? We'll start with on the audience first for public input. Please create your name and address, please. Wait a minute, I'll give you your three minutes back.
That's a little tall for me.
Yeah.
Lisa Bienvenue, 34 Everett Street. I just want to say that I was pleasantly surprised, and kudos to the residents of Ward 6 with the news. and kudos to the residents of Ward 6 with the news that the city of Chicagobe won with the lawsuit that pilot made against the city, saying that the city council did not have the right to vote down them having that pilot stationed. So that was really encouraging. And I really want to thank the residents of Ward 6 who really rallied the troops and made a very good argument on what the drawbacks were to the pilot station. And it was contentious at times because I went to a lot of those meetings with the planning board and with subcommittees, and it was contentious. There was comments that were made at some of those meetings from the planning department or from public officials that basically, you know, they had the right to do it. And I'm really encouraged by what happened with this judge upholding this because what it showed is that the residents do have rights, not to just willy-nilly say they don't want something, but for the betterment of the community and for the neighborhoods, we have rights. And we don't have to just listen to what public officials or elected officials tell us to say they know better and we don't know. Because we know, we all know something, and we have to listen to each other and work together. But being in a position of authority doesn't mean that you're always correct. So thank you for voting for the residents of Ward 6 and the city. And, you know, it was great for us that the judge upheld that ruling. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Mary Beth Costello from 66 Boss Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak as a person has asked me, as a resident, to acknowledge the fact that shrubs were finally cut on Syrick Street. And that was kind of following through of what Mrs. Bienvenue said. That was a big victory for the residents of Farmington Avenue, some on Nice Street, as well as on Syrick. So this particular resident wants to recognize the health department, excuse me, the building department director, who is Frank Born, and she hopes that this particular resident continues to maintain the property because that intersection there is extremely unsafe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input? Just come up to the mic, please.
Sue Nimchik, James Street. Meeting after meeting, what the eyes and ears see and hear requires to speak up, speak out, and speak to the residents, taxpayer, voter, the 24/7 individuals that Lisa, in a way, was talking about, and perhaps these people are here for the same reason. My question is, Chicagobe a council of the resident taxpayer voter representing them and responsible to them, or a power block, push, rush, and wing team effort? Just curious. Number one, it was some time ago that there was a rush for something to be submitted to the state for a four-year term for a mayor on a ballot for the next election. And Lisa was talking about it, and it was a rush, and so did the solicitor say it was a rush. But a rush is a push deliberate and direct and definite. When there's no time, little to no discussion, little public input, little or no questions, rather than raw power, team effort, which I call a wing team. As a mayor, past, present, or future, I would vote down, rescind what was put forth, voice it down, vote it down because it separates the mayor from accountability, responsibility, duty and service to those invested in the city, residents, taxpayers, voters, all in one. Second, there was a time on September 27th, followed by October 3rd, followed by November 2nd, three meetings where the same rush-push was occurring. And it was where Councilor George and Gary were, and they understood what was being pushed, where Starbucks was not known to be withdrawing among the butters, but yes, with certain individuals. And there was a real push to get that through. But fortunately, the zoning committee upheld. Then there was another meeting where the golf course delegation came, and there are three, four levels there. But what impressed me was the last zoning committee meeting where Counselor Gary stood up and directed those two heads of departments who on September 27th were just pushing. And he said, have the people been informed? Two, one. Countdown. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Anyone else for public input from the floor? Anybody, you're welcome to go up to the mic, sir. Yep, that mic right there, please.
Good afternoon. Daniel Slowick. I live at Cora.
Could you put the mic up a little bit?
Of course. I live at Cora Avenue, 32 in Chicagobe. The reason for my coming in here is the item number 11 on your agenda. It's the zone change. I apologize for my broken English and limited vocabulary, but it's very important for me. That's why I came in here. I'm going to refer to my cheat notes a little bit here. So this is a zoning change. It's primarily, I'm disgusted with some of the changes that there might be introduced with that, especially the overlay. It can introduce apartments. It can introduce businesses. This is residential area. We don't stand for it. We don't approve it. And there's a number of things why I don't feel like it should be encouraged. One of the things is that the planning department was the one who introduced the owners to this overlay. Owners did not request that. And we, I think, as residents, we are on some answers. Why was this intended? And why was this brought up to the owner? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public input from the floor? Second time, sir, go to, yep, to the mic. Thank you.
Andre Girich, and I live in 147 Empire Street. I want to talk about, same as just men speak about, changing zone. My lot connect right next to that lot. It used to be West Overflower. And we got a little bit problem because as far as I concern, or as I see, zoning change gonna lean us into the, like, a housing project duplexes built on those lots. And it's, we're looking for, like, a problem for us. Me personally and my neighbors, they can't attend this meeting, but we discussed about, and they okay if they're gonna change zoning to build single-family houses, not multifamily or any other structural on that lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public input from the floor? Is there anyone else for public input from the floor? Is there anyone on Zoom for public input? Is there anyone else on Zoom for public input?
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Mike. My wife and I, Lori Jocelyn, own 192 Empire Street. And for the last several weeks, we've been asking the city to oppose the zone change from Zone A to Zone B with the overlay. We understand that the owners of the property want to sell the property. It's been an eyesore, and I agree. But how they're going around and approaching it, I don't think is a very good plan. The engineering firm that they've hired, they want to sell us on putting up multifamilies, possibly having a change to Zone B. All we're looking at is, it's Zone A now, from McKinstry Avenue all the way to Penn Dexter, on that side of Chicagobe Street, there is no multifamily dwelling on that side of the street. They're going to try to get that overlay pushed into effect, and all the overlay is going to do is take a 100 by 100-foot lot and drop it down to 75-foot frontage to get more land for more duplexes. They're going to pave the way with this overlay for developer to come in and put multifamilies in that whole area of Empire Street over onto Chicagobe Street. So we're asking you to do the right thing. It's Zone A. It's been Zone A. Please leave it Zone A, and do not allow the overlay to come into play. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the floor for public input? Sir, are you going to go for public input? You mentioned you might go to public input. Okay, so you're all set. I just wanted to make sure. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close public input.
Motion to close public input.
Motion made in second to close public input. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
And a motion passes. Communications.
We have none.
No communications. Minutes, please.
We have two sets of minutes, May 21st mayor's briefing and May 21st regular meeting.
Counselor Schumsky.
Motion that the minutes of the May 21st mayor's briefing and the regular meeting be approved.
Motion made in second that we accept the minutes of May 21st mayor's briefing and May 21st city council meeting. On the order, please.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
And a motion passes. We'll go into mayor's orders.
Order that the city council accept a donation of $300 from Colleen Bates, from Colleen Bates to the Chicagobe Police Department. Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counselor Brooks.
Make a motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second. The motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this was a $300 donation to the police department. We send our thanks to Ms. Bates, and I'd ask that the president send a letter of thanks.
I'll take care of that. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $10,000 be in hereby appropriate to the following named account, DBW Highway Expense Account for Street Signs. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the Highway Salary Account for Highway Maintenance Man.
Counselor Goff.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second. The motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation, mayor. On the motion, please.
I'd like to thank Elizabeth Batista for making our streets a little bit safer and allowing the $10,000 from the DPW Highway Expense Account for street signs that all of us have asked for.
Thank you. Counselor Costello.
Yes, I agree with Counselor Goff to thank Superintendent Batista, along with Mayor View, in regards to supporting the $10,000 to address the increase of signs that are going up based on the numerous requests from the city council. The new signs, some of them even have modern technology. So it's going to put us even in a more safer position. So I want to thank both Mayor View and Superintendent Batista for asking for this $10,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
For making our streets safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $265,113.44 be in hereby appropriate to the following named account, DBW Highway Special Account for Snow and Ice Removal. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash Account.
Counselor Kuchain.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second. The motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation, the mayor. On the motion, please.
This will cover last year's snow removal. The snow removal line item is a deficit spending account, so this will cover that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $3 million be in hereby appropriated to the following named account, Reduction of the 2025 Fiscal Year Tax Levy. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash Account.
Counselor Schumsky.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second. The motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation, the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is to allocate $3 million from our free cash account for the reduction of the 2025 fiscal year tax levy.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counselor Costello.
Yes, this should be beneficial for the taxpayer in the long run for the $3 million to be applied to the reduction of the tax levy for 2025. So again, thank you to Mayor View for considering this particular idea.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $2 million be in hereby appropriate to the following named account, Treasurer's Special Account for OPEB. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash Account.
Counselor Valkir.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second. The motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation, the mayor. On the motion, please.
On a motion, this is a request from the treasurer's office. This is regarding other post-employment benefits trust account. This is for retirees of the city of Chicagobe. And usually post-employee benefits refer to compensation, benefits provided to employees after their employment has ended. Common examples include pensions, retirements, health insurance, deferred compensation. And this is something that is not mandated. However, it behooves our city to start a practice of having a funding schedule, and this enhances our bond rating. And so the treasurer has requested this. And so the Treasurer has requested this money, and I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme, Roy, Wagner, Zagrowski, Ariaga, Brooks, Goff, Valkir, Crampits, Schumsky, Kushein, Labree, Pinia Costello, 13 yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $3,000 be in hereby appropriate to the following named account, Purchasing Special Account for Central Photocopier. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash Account.
Counselor Zagrowski.
Same course, Mr. President.
Motion made in second, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
The purchasing agent has requested this money to cover the cost of paper.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme, Roy, Wagner, Zagrowski, Ariaga, Brooks, Goff, Valkir, Crampits, Schumsky, Kushein, Labree, Pinia Costello, 13 yes.
And a motion passes.
We have a new appointment of Artis Carr as a member of the Commission on Disability.
Counselor Labree.
Motion that the Mayor's order be received and referred to the Human Resource Committee for a public hearing.
Motion made in second, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor and sent to the Human Resources for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
On the motion, it's a new appointment, so we'll take it up in committee.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme, Roy, Wagner, Zagrowski, Ariaga, Brooks, Goff, Valkir, Crampits, Schumsky, Kushein, Labree, Pinia Costello, 13 yes.
Be it ordered that the City Council endorse the City of Chicagoe Comprehensive Plan Envision Our Chicagoe 2040, and that the action plan for, and the action plan for implementation.
Counselor Roy.
Yeah, motion that the Mayor's order be received, passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second, that the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this plan has been recommended and endorsed by the mayor and the Planning Department. And I'd like to make a motion that the mayor set up a special public meeting with the Planning Department to discuss the comprehensive plan further.
We don't need to do a motion. He can just put that in there, correct?
Yes. Separate motions?
You're approving this this evening, or you sent it to committee?
No, no. Send it to committee. So he said...
What, what committee, which committee you want to send it to?
Finance.
Oh, no, it's a special meeting. Doesn't matter. No, he want, the mayor calls a special, he wants to do it through a special meeting. So he doesn't need to have sent to any committee. It's the special meeting of his.
Special meeting. Is the desire to pass it this evening?
No.
Okay. So they can either send it somewhere.
We don't need to send it to a special meeting. We don't need to. Special meeting is a special meeting to discuss.
We could refer it back to the mayor with the request that he call a special meeting.
Right.
How about that? Refer the order back to the mayor with a request from the board that he call a special meeting with the mayor's office and planning.
I'd like to refer this back to the mayor to have a special meeting with the Planning Department, a public meeting on this comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Questions from the floor? Counselor Costello.
Okay, well, basically, are we sending it back to the mayor, and then we're going to vote on it again?
So the mayor is the only one that can call a special meeting. So the mayor is going to call a special meeting, and then we'll talk to, and then we'll send it back to the full committee for another vote, to another committee.
Okay, and then...
It'll go to the special meeting, and then you can vote on it in the special meeting.
Okay, so we can vote on it.
Unless you wanted to send it to a committee, then it's got to go to a committee. You voted on it in committee, and then come back to a full board meeting.
So my, I'm sorry. So my question is, can we vote on this particular plan today but still have a public hearing?
No.
So everything's going to have to be done at once? So for today's business, it would be just to refer it back to the mayor for a public hearing?
For a special meeting, and we can vote on it that night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we good, everybody?
You could, just motion on the floor. For conversation, you could also refer to your Community Development Committee. You wanted to, your own committee. No, we don't want to do that.
It's up to the council if they want to, you can refer to a committee and have a hearing at the committee level. But I believe that will the council, or at least the motion was to go have a special meeting.
Then we're referring twice when I get it over with. So leave it to, leave it to...
Jerry's first, second motion.
Second motion to Jerry's to refer it to the mayor's for a special meeting.
Got it.
Got it? Okay, any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme, Roy, Wagner, Zagrowski, Ariaga, Brooks, Goff, Valkir, Crampits, Schumsky, Kushein, Kushein.
Bill.
Labree, Pinia Costello, 12 yes.
And a motion passes.
Mr. President, seems like the IT department is doing something. You mind if we make a motion for a five-minute recess while IT sorts out any potential issues that might be having?
Motion made in second to take a five-minute recess until the IT corrects the Zoom. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme, Roy, Wagner, Zagrowski, Ariaga, Brooks, Goff, Valkir, Crampits, Schumsky, Kushein, Labree, Pinia Costello, 12 yes.
Oh, okay. I think they're trying to get...
Okay, where were we, Clerk?
Mayor's Order 9.
Mayor's Order 9.
Order that the sum of $2 million being hereby appropriate to the following named accounts: Stabilization Fund for capital budgeting. Set amounts be taken from the available funds in the undesignated fund balance free cash account.
Counselor Wagner.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and referred to the Finance Committee for a public hearing.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Refer to the Finance Committee for a public hearing.
Okay. Motion that the mayor's order be received, passed through all, oh, refer, refer to the Finance Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this is, you know, $2 million. It's not a small sum of money, and we don't exactly have a list of capital expenditures any of this would be used on yet, so I'd like to get some general ideas of what they want before we, you know, appropriate $2 million.
If I may, they're, they want, they're waiting for the money to know what they're going to pursue. He mentioned that in his mayor's briefing that, once he gets the approval for, and I'll do whatever you want to do, I'm just saying that, he wants to know what money you're going to give him, so he can meet with the team and prioritize, I believe he said, what he was doing. So that's up to you.
We didn't meet with, yeah, but he didn't meet with his team beforehand and ask, hey, what could you do with $2 million? Right? I mean, you know, if he wants to do however order he wants, we can do however order we want.
Correct. Okay. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Motion made to send it to Finance for a public hearing. Roll call.
President Laflamme?
No.
Roy?
No.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
No.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
No.
Crampits?
No.
Shumsky?
No.
Kuchain?
Yes.
Labree?
No.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Okay, motion failed.
Five no, eight, sorry, five yes, eight no.
And the motion's defeated.
Defeated.
So we...
Need another motion.
Need another motion. You want to make another motion? Nope?
No, thank you.
Okay, so I'll pass on to Counselor Brooks.
I think a motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages in the written recommendation.
Motion made in second to the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this is generally how it's submitted every year. The mayor and the financial team, as well as department heads, look for what the total financial allocation will be, so they can develop a priority list of capital purchases that they'll need to make to help sustain their department's full functionality.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
No.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
No.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
No.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kuchain?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
No.
Ten yes, three no.
And the motion passes.
Have a favorable report from the zoning committee?
Nine to four.
What's that?
Nine to four. Once, four voted no.
He did say that. I just said, and the motion passes.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Got Wagner is no, Ariaga is no, Goff is no, oh yeah, sorry, Piniac Costello is no.
Yep.
Four no. Nine to four. Motion passes.
And the motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit under Chapter 275-58(c) for the purpose of a liquor license located at 108 West Street.
Counselor Balakir.
Motion that the zoning committee report be received and that the special permit application be approved with conditions this evening.
Motion made in second to favorable zoning committee report be received for the special permit and be approved this evening. On the motion, please.
On the motion, the applicant is looking for a purpose of a liquor license located at 108 West Street, and we had some discussion on this, and we approve this tentatively with the condition that the fire department do a walkthrough inspection of the entire building, and this is a permit to run with the applicant.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
Have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a zone change application from Business A and Residential A to Residential B with mill conversion and commercial center overlay for the entirety of property located at 0 Chicopee Street and 445 Chicopee Street for the purpose of creating one contiguous zoning district by extending the Residential B zoning district to the entirety of both parcels and adding the mill conversion and commercial center lay over, center overlay for the purpose of proposed residential development.
Counselor Balakir.
Motion that the zoning committee report be received and the proposed zone change be approved this evening.
Motion made in second that the zoning committee report be received and approved this evening. Is there going to be two votes on this one?
There are going to be two votes.
Okay.
Yes.
On the motion, please.
Okay, first, Mr. President, we're going to, we're going to discuss the, the zone change. This is a zone change that is requested by the applicant, and this is a property that is split zoned. It's zoned Business A and Residential A. This used to be the old Westover Flowers on Chicopee Street, and this has been a property that has fallen into disrepair, and it's just kind of sitting there vacantly. It's my understanding that the family has been wrestling with this for a while and that they'd like to move something forward here. So we did have a zoning meeting last week, and we had some discussion, we had some applicants, and as a reminder, with the zoning change, there's two components. There's the planning board and also the zoning committees. So there's two components in order to make a zone change. And so we had discussion, and the planning board voted in favor of it. It was a split vote, but they did vote in favor of it. And we voted for it, and again, we are a recommending body. We recommended that it be approved, and we were bringing it, of course, to the big city council meeting that we're having tonight with the understanding that there could be either single-family houses here or duplex houses. There's also another component that we're going to have a second vote. That's also with the mill conversion and commercial center overlay. Now, again, we had some discussion, so again, we're still talking about the, the zone change, but I wanted to bring this information out to the committee. So with the mill conversion and commercial center overlay, of course, there, there's other issues that potentially come up with that. However, the council has more control by if we get involved with the mill conversion and commercial center overlay, if we approve that. So the council will have more concerns, and there would also have to be a special permit that would have to be approved if we go with the mill conversion. And that has to go also before a lot of department heads and committees. So there is actually more control by having that. So potentially, again, there's options of all residential, such as single-family, duplex, or multiple-family uses. However, based on past considerations, we would generally go along with what's the conformity with the neighborhood. So invariably, that would be either single-family or duplex housing. So that's my understanding in talking with planning, because, again, that would restrict some of the uses, and we'd have more control. But again, that's, there's two votes here. The first vote is for the zone change, and the second vote is for the mill conversion. So I thought it was important to bring some of that information to the committee members, especially the ones that do not serve on the zoning committee. So, Mr. President, the first vote is the zone change. Again, this is a split zoned. It's Business A and it's Residential A, but a zone change from Business A and Residential A to Residential B.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Counselor Labree.
Yes, this has been a Business A property with a little strip of Residential A property going down the middle of it. It's been vacant for over 20 years. I don't want to guess that it's been 25, but it's probably close to that. I was a little leery about the Residential B, but when we do, if we do vote the mill conversion overlay district in, again, as Counselor Balakir alluded to, they need a special permit. The mill conversion overlay district, the definition of it is, it establishes safeguards by providing design specifications that ensure thoughtful connections and transitions between properties. And it also requires a special permit. So we're going to have, you know, some safeguards that we're going to be able to put in there. I did not want to see it be left a Business A property. If anybody's gone down and looked at it, it's an eyesore. It's overgrown all over the property. So that's the reason I'm for it, but I'm for it because, you know, we're going to have the mill conversion overlay district. I'm hoping that's going to pass, and we will have our, you know, safeguards in place, and we'll have a say in the matter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counselor Goff.
I'd like to make a motion that the zoning committee report be sent to a committee as a whole. This whole rezoning and mill conversion affects a lot of people. The area is zoned for Residential A. Basically, everything is Residential A around it. Giving carte blanche to some developer to put in any kind of housing that they, they wish is just not something that's good for, for Willimansett. We're already overcrowded. We're way overcrowded with housing and housing projects and traffic and zoning ordinances should lessen congestion, not add to it. It, it's just crazy to, to say that you can turn that into another housing complex. You should be building up the area. You, you're going to gain more tax revenue through single-family homes or duplexes than you are with a housing complex. You know, it's, it's crazy. I, I just do not agree with the, the mill redevelopment overlay district being added into that. You know, it's, it's... The neighborhood should be built up, that things that people want to come to. We should have a grocery store. You know, we should be looking at things to make, make that area better. That area is going down the tubes quickly. I've gotten a lot of phone calls from all the constituents in that area. The last thing we want to see is a housing complex. I understand there is a housing crisis. Pick another area. Why are you shoving everything down into the Willimansett area? You're just making it worse. We already have issues down there. We don't need more. Thank you.
Counselor Wagner. Counselor Wagner.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I was split vote on these. I'm in favor of the change to Residential B, which is still restricted at most to two-family housings or single-family housings. I'm entirely in favor of that. There were some comments made by persons who attended the meeting that spoke during public input about the types of individuals that move into these multi-unit dwellings or something along those lines, that I was not very in favor of. And I understand the concerns around multifamily dwellings, which is why I voted against the overlay district. I understand that there's extra controls with that. I'm still not in favor of it. I was not in favor of the comments, particularly as I live in one of these buildings. It's a five-unit building. It's sandwiched right in the middle of a bunch of single-family homes. There's other dual-family buildings in the area. We all live harmoniously together. Housing can only be good for a city like Chicopee. It'll boost our tax base. It'll bring people to our community, in a community that's been stagnant for a while. So I'm in favor of the Residential B change, not necessarily the commercial overlay district. But, you know, when we're talking about our neighbors and the places that we live, you know, let's keep in mind, we're all human beings, trying to survive. You know, we, we can only live where there's, where there's available housing. And to say that certain kinds of people live in certain kinds of housing, or that certain neighborhoods are, are going down the drain because of something like that, I'm not in favor of that kind of, of talk about this city and our neighbors, who we should love and care for. So...
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counselor Balakir.
Yeah, interesting comments. Thank you. Now, again, I, I just want to mention about the zone change. This is split zone property. It's Business A and it's Residential A to Business B, which would really allow single-family and duplex housing. Again, by having the mill conversion, the, the city council has a lot of say with, through a special permit as to what type of housing that could be built here. So I know that people are concerned, but again, based on the proposal, my sense is that multifamily dwellings, I'm not sure about that. I just, I, I question that thinking. But again, I'm only one vote here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? He's actually off, so we do not have any Counselor on Zoom. What time is it?
It is 8:10.
At 8:10, we have no city counselors on Zoom, so we will be doing, doing the meeting internally. Okay, any other comments from the floor? Counselor Costello.
Yeah, I'm sorry to, to dwell on this, but clearly, sometimes people get confused of what this overlay is. Does that give them a developer carte blanche as far as any development? What, is there any boundaries? Are there any restrictions for a overlay? Because that's where it seems there's a breakdown on what's happening. Are they able to put in any type of housing, any type of business, or are there any types of restrictions for an overlay? Did that, was that discussed at the meeting? Because it appears that the residents want only single-family homes. That's what, the impression that I'm getting here at this meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Wagner, second time.
I think I can offer a little bit on that, because I was reading up just now, and I read up a lot, and before the zoning committee meeting. Residential B is limited to, and there's a little bit of difference in the, the size of the allowed lots where they're able to build. Residential B is restricted mostly to single-family and dual-family dwellings. With a resident, with a commercial, with the mill conversion overlay, from my understanding of reading the zoning ordinances, it would allow for multi-unit housing potentially beyond that with the allowed lot sizes on Residential B, and it would also allow for the use of some of those buildings for studios, like say a dance studio or something like that, or businesses with a focus on the arts, is what is stated in the mill conversion overlay. Again, there's, you know, the special permit protections, but that's a lengthy process, as we all know. But, you know, the, the fact that it's allowed under there is what gave me a little bit of concern. And I'd rather if people wanted that later on the line, if the lots get split and sold off, have anybody that wants an overlay district put on that, on a particular lot to come back. That was my thinking.
Thank you. Counselor Balakir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, my understanding of, of talking with planning, it allows, okay, again, Residential B is single-family and duplex, okay? However, as my counselor to the left, Counselor Wagner mentioned, that the options would be single-family, duplex, multifamily, potential uses. By having the mill conversion, however, there's the big caveat that this has to go through an extensive vetting process with department heads, and also that we have to have a special permit here. And we have, we can dictate a lot of information in that and a lot of conditions. So we have more control by having a mill conversion. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, Counselor Crampits?
Yeah, I just did want to add one comment. If, without the special permit, then the zone, whether or not the, let's assume the, the zone change does pass, that would be the end of any more public hearings, or at least with the mill conversion overlay, which does require a special permit, at least there would be one more, you know, public hearing to, to go. So I just wanted to, you know, comment on that, that if you just go without the overlay, then it's, you know, this is kind of the end of it for any more public hearings on the, on the zone change. So, thank you.
Okay, let's see, there's nobody on Zoom. Okay, the motion on the floor by Counselor Goff is to send it to a committee of the whole. For the first one.
So we call the amendment first?
Yep, I just did. The, the vote will be for sending it to a committee of the whole. You don't want to send it to zoning again. You want a committee of the whole, you said?
Yep.
Okay, motion made in second to send it to a committee of the whole for the Business A and Business B right now, correct? Because we got to do two separate.
Correct, Counsel. Can we add both of them together, or can we do, we have to do each one separate, because there's two orders here?
There's two votes, so do them separately.
That's what I thought. Okay.
So on the first one.
On the first one.
Wait, Gary, excuse me.
The first one is to send it to committee of the whole.
Okay, well, isn't there a motion on the floor right now?
But she's, two.
There's two.
Her goes first.
George's motion to pass, but an amendment always gets called first. Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, on the amendment to send it to a committee of the whole, roll call.
Mr. Clerk?
Yep.
Before, so what's the motion on the floor?
To send it to a committee of the whole.
So it's not an amendment, it's just a motion to send it to committee of the whole?
George had a, his first, George's motion was...
Right.
Board Three, Counselor Goff made a, a motion that it be sent.
Right, it's just a motion to send. So we've got her motion for, a motion to send the committee of the whole. It's not an amendment. The, the last one is the one that you, you consider first. So it would be Counselor Goff's motion first, and if that doesn't pass, then you come back to Counselor Balakir's motion.
So if it passes, it's done.
So if Counselor Goff's motion to refer it to committee of the whole, that passes, then Counselor Balakir's motion is moot.
I'm just calling an amendment. You're not calling an amendment. That's what we're...
Yeah, okay, all right, very good.
Right.
Okay.
So, again.
On Counselor's Goff, on Counselor Goff's motion to send to the committee of the whole. President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
No.
Wagner?
No.
Zegarowski?
No.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
No.
Crampits?
No.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kuchain? He's gone, right, for the night?
Yep, for the night.
Labree?
No.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no.
It was defeated. Now on Counselor Balakir's on...
For passage.
For passage.
Yep. Yep. On the zone change, yep. On the zone changes.
Zone change, not the overlay. Correct. Any other comments from the floor on the zone change? Roll call.
President Laflamme.
No.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zieglerowski.
No.
You missed one.
Wait a minute.
Sorry. Roy.
All right. Question of the order.
Yeah, so Laflamme we had, no. Roy?
No, but what is the, what is the order again?
This is to pass it.
Pass it.
Pass the zone change.
Pass the zone change.
Yes.
Okay. Wagner.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Zieglerowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
No.
Ballkeer.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniak Costello.
Yes.
Ten yes, two no.
And a motion passes. Now we have to.
Okay, Mr. President, the second vote is the vote for the mill conversion and the commercial center overlay. So a motion to pass.
Motion made in second to approve the mill conversion and commercial center overlay for the purpose of proposed residential development. On the motion.
Well, on the motion, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I wanted to mention, as we mentioned us a few minutes ago, that there is more control by having the mill conversion and commercial center overlay regarding Zero Chicopee Street and 445 Chicopee Street. The uses could be single-family, duplex, or multifamily uses. However, the sentiment is that it would be consistent with the surrounding residential uses. And again, in speaking with the planning department, this proposal passed. They were, they also had a vote from the planning board. And again, because of the uses and having more control by having the special permit that the city council would have, I am in favor of having this mill conversion for additional protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any, Counselor Goff?
I'd like to make a motion that the zoning committee report be sent to, back to the zoning committee for public input.
Motion made in second that the commercial mill version and commercial center overlay be sent back to the zoning committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
On the motion, I just think people need to understand, there's not enough information out there that people had time to read on the mill redevelopment overlay district. And I think a lot of education needs to be shared at that zoning committee.
Counselor Ballakir.
Yeah, thank you. The planning department did have a meeting referencing this particular issue. And as I mentioned a couple of minutes ago in my comments, that they did vote in favor of having a passage and having a protection of the mill conversion and commercial center overlay. We wanted to have the planning director for our meeting, he was unavailable on a previous commitment, so, but in speaking with him today, he again emphasized to me that by having these safeguards and by having this mill conversion, this makes this project more tentative with protections by the city. But again, this is my take by having a conversation with him today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? I'd like to ask a question if I could, please.
A motion to allow President Laflamme to speak.
Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Absence.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zieglerowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Ballkeer.
Yes.
Crumpets. Schumsky. Kuchain. Labrie.
Yes.
Piniak Costello.
Yes.
Eleven, sorry, ten yes.
Thank you. To the council. If this gets denied tonight, this part of it, the mill conversion, does it give us, is there a time period, the zone change on above it is, goes into effect versus the overlay part of it? So in other words, if they, if they wanted to, they could, the overlay, will it stop them from moving forward? Or does it give it the time to have a meeting to understand it?
So.
So the first one passed.
Yes.
All right? So that's done, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but the second one, if it, it means, as Counselor Ballakir was saying, that the planning department asked for it, I'm still in questioning of what it, what does this do to, I would like to understand a little bit more.
How does it affect the first decision?
Correct.
Yeah, that I couldn't tell you. I don't know, I'm not a zoning expert, so I couldn't. You'd have to ask the planning department, fortunately.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Comments?
Mr. President, getting back to this potential quagmire, could we table this and bring it back? If we say, for example, if we wanted to bring Lee in from planning so that he could give us more information, is that something that would be possible?
Correct. That's, she has a motion on the floor for that, so if we send, do you have a motion on the floor? Yes, you do.
I'd like to send it back to zoning, so that way.
Right, so if we send, thank you. If we send it back to zoning, we can have Lee come in and have a public, and understand it better. Because I still have questions and I'm not comfortable with those right now. So that's why I'm, you know, right now, she's on the floor, so we'll take that vote first. Counsel Brooks.
So I guess your fundamental question, and we do need clarity on this, if the overlay portion of this entire motion goes back to committee, does it adversely affect the conversion of the first component of the vote that was in the affirmative? I would guess, yes, it probably does because the two are so closely tied together. So by default, we'll be delaying the clock going off on the zoning piece because I think clerk would tell it's 21 days before it can actually take effect?
I think you're right.
21 days for objections, yeah.
Yes. So we're, we're then arbitrarily extending the period before the clock can start on component number one of this order. I just want people to understand that. So we're adversely impacting the applicant because we're now delaying what is our standard practice for zone change and anybody to appeal the zone change that's been granted by this board at any given time. So I'm just pointing that out, that we're delaying the timer on this and it could adversely affect the applicant.
Through the chair, to, I mean, to Counselor Ballakir, what is the time period we have left?
I'm not sure.
It's not the time period per se that you have left. It's the, if this was, this piece of the legislation was approved tonight.
Right, which it was.
Tomorrow would be day one of the 21-day appeal period.
Correct, okay.
If it, if they're tied in so closely, the mill, or the overlay component to this zone change, then the clock can't start ticking tomorrow morning as it normally otherwise would have. So then are we going to expose ourselves to something because the applicant could come back and say, well, the clock should have started on June 5th, that should be day one, June 5th would be day one. Now you're delaying my day one. I'm bet adversely affected by that and I don't know. And our attorney indicated he wasn't a zoning expert, so I just think that we need to be mindful of that. And I think we're really trying to get, by parsing it between two components, I think we're entering uncharted waters. And I'm just, I'm pointing that fact out, that an applicant would expect that their day one, if their application was approved, would be June 5th, 2024. If this goes back to zoning, that doesn't occur. I'm merely pointing out that fact. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could.
Yes, go.
So Counselor Brooks, I'm not sure what is, how to say this, so if you are, you've got the zone change passed, so as Counselor Brooks said, the appeal period starts tomorrow. But I don't know that the second component affects the first. I think it just, I think, I don't think sending the second component back to zoning will have any effect on the, on the appeal period. The appeal period starts tomorrow because of two separate components to this. I don't know if that sheds any light on.
But it's the same order, though. Even though it's compartmentalized in the two parts, it's one order.
Two parts.
But.
Okay.
We have multiple, we have, we've seen multiple orders that are one succinct order with several components attached to it that require separate votes, albeit, but it's still one order on our agenda. They're not broken out into four different orders if we have three different additional components like we have oftentimes from Counselor Ballakir's committee.
Okay, I see your point, but if the, if you passed one and didn't pass the other, it wouldn't matter. One would pass and one wouldn't. So it doesn't matter that there, my point is, if we passed, we, if you as a body passed, sorry, if you as a body passed the zone change, but you didn't pass, you rejected the overlay, the zone change would still move forward, you'd have the appeal period. So they're not, they're on the same order, but because they, I think because they are associated with the same locus, the same property, but I don't believe it would affect if you, it's the same thing as if one passed and one didn't.
So you're saying they're not mutually exclusive? I guess that's the clarification I'm looking for.
I think they are mutually exclusive. I think you, you can pass one, if you didn't pass the other, you still have the zone change as done.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I do have a question still. So if you read it, it says to Residence B with the mill conversion and commercial center overlay, that we changed it. It says to change it, Residence A to Residence B with mill version conversion overlay for the entirety of the property located at Zero. But if the second part doesn't go, how does that affect? It doesn't.
It does. Because they're tied together. That, that's my point, is that while they require two separate votes, it does affect it because then I would think that the applicant would need to go back and then reapply for a zone change to cover the entirety of the property, knowing that the overlay district was out of play.
Okay.
That's my point.
Counsel Roy.
Counsel Goff, what would we be accomplishing, or what are we looking for if we send it back to zoning, Counselor?
Just so the residents have more information about the mill conversion and what that entails. Like Counselor Ballakir stated, the planning board was not able to attend that meeting. So a lot of information was missing about what's intended here and what the rules per se are.
Okay. But again, questioning the overlay thing, I mean, don't they apply, have to apply for a special permit to the council once they decide what they want to build there?
They do.
We don't know what they want to build, really, right?
No, because there is no buyer at this point and there is no plan, so.
It's all speculation.
It's all speculation.
Frank? Yeah, I'm sorry. Counsel Ballakir was next.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. No, again, I just want to bring to everybody's attention as a point of information that the planning board did have a meeting. They did have a meeting and they talked about this, okay? Because again, they voted, they voted on this. And I wonder if I have this material with me. Bear with me a minute. I might have this here. Okay, yes, I do have some information here. This was May 3rd, May 3rd. Actually, no, I'm sorry, the 2nd. I'll read this, I'll read this into the record. It said, "The Chicopee Planning Board held a public hearing on Thursday, May 2nd. The purpose of the hearing was to consider zone change from Residential A and Business A to Residential B with the application of the mill conversion, commercial center for the entirety of the property for the purpose of residential development." And they voted in favor of it. It wasn't, it was a three to two vote, but they voted in favor of this. So I, I'm just trying to say that there has been discussion, the planning board did have this meeting. So I do have this document here.
Okay, thank you. No other, Counsel Crumpets was next, I'm sorry.
Yeah, through the president to our attorney, since I think we're in a little bit of a sticky situation here since we passed the first part and about the zone change, which I think kind of starts the clock on that, and I don't think the mill conversion would affect it. Could we go back and revote on the first one to table it at the city council level and then with Counselor Goff's motion, send the second part back to committee? And then when it comes out, take up the, take the zone change off a hold or revote on it again? I'm, I guess I'm also worried about the zone change kind of moving along on its own and while we wait, not that I think something's going to happen in that short a period of time, there's the potential that it possibly could. So I don't know if, and I'm kind of also throwing this out to the body to kind of get people to think about their feedback about going back and tabling the first motion or the first part of the zone change that we passed and then.
Reconsideration.
Whether or not this goes back to committee. Or I guess we could, I guess what we could do is to see if it goes back to committee and then if it does, go back to the first vote and if we decide to table it, to kind of stall it temporarily while it's in zoning. So that was kind of my thought, so I'm just kind of throwing that out there, so. So I don't know if the attorney can comment on it afterwards or.
Okay, Counsel Costello was next.
I agree with Counselor Goff that the residents should be heard. The vote on the planning board was three to two, so it was, it was a very close vote and we should take that into consideration as well. It appears that the mill conversion can be controversial because maybe there's so much development that's allowed to go in there, special permit or not. It's what's the land use? That's what counts. So I agree with Counselor Goff. I think there should be a hearing where the public can hear about the mill conversion. It was unfortunate that the city planner wasn't there that night at the zoning committee meeting because he's an expert in regards to what a mill conversion is and what the uses of that mill conversion would be. I also agree with Counselor Crumpets. Maybe we should, what Counselor Brooks brought up, which is a valid point, we can address that and still have another public meeting so that the residents can be heard. Hopefully, either the city planner is at that meeting or a representative from the planning department. Because we're going back, we're going back and we're looking at, what did the planning board do? And again, it was, it was a close, close vote. Thank you.
Next was Counsel Wagner was next. Did you have your hand up here? No?
Let me just give Fred his answer.
Okay, wait a minute, let's, you do that at the end for him. Counsel Brooks, I'll let you do it.
Then I guess I have a procedural question. So if we hear the motion, which is currently on the floor, which is to table the overlay district component of it, I don't think we can take a vote to table our approved vote from the previous item. I think we would have to take a vote to rescind our vote in the affirmative and then hear someone introduce a motion to then table. someone introduce a motion to then table component number one, which is the zone change piece of this item on the agenda.
I'll answer that.
Am I, am I correct in that?
Okay, I'm going to have the clerk certify that for you right now.
In consultation with law, yes, what Fred is getting at and what you're getting at can happen. You would need a motion from someone who was on the affirmative to reconsider your previous vote of approval. So to reconsider, somebody on the affirmative side who voted for it would make a motion to reconsider order number 11. So then that would be, if that's voted favorably, that would be placed back on the floor for reconsideration. Then you would need another motion. Do you want to approve it again? Do you want to send it to a committee of the whole? Do you want to send it back to zoning? So that's the procedural way to get to what both of you counselors are thinking.
Correct.
But the motion on the floor currently is to just table the overlay component of item number 12.
We have two motions. We have a motion for approval.
Right, but that was, this motion trumps that motion only because it was made post the motion to approve.
Correct. So hers would come first.
Correct.
And I believe that motion that Councilor Goff made was to just send it back to zoning.
To zoning.
It wasn't to table it, it was to send it to zoning.
That first and then go back to rescind the first motion of approval, then it could all go back to zoning?
Correct.
So the next motion to be made, as the clerk said, would be a motion to reconsider. It would have to be made by someone who, a council that voted for the zone change. Because it has to be come from a prevailing, member of the prevailing vote. That would be the next motion to be made.
Okay, we're going to move on with it. Councilor Brooks, second time.
Just quickly, but if this motion doesn't pass, then we're back to square one with respect to voting the overlay component, yea or nay?
Yep.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Yep. Okay. So clerk, you want to read the first one will be what?
Well, the.
This has got to be someone on.
It's going to be Councilor Goff's motion that the overlay portion of this zone change be sent back to zoning.
Which is there now. Okay.
Correct.
Roll call on that. I'm sending it back to zoning. The overlay one. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
No.
Wagner.
No.
Ziegrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
No.
Crampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniya Costello.
Yes.
Eight yes, four no.
Okay, that one passed to send it to zoning.
Yep.
Now the other one.
Do you want me to make a motion for reconsideration?
If you would like.
If you want.
I make a motion for reconsideration of the first part of item 11.
Motion made second to reconsider item number 11.
This is in regards to the zone change from business A and residential A to.
Roll call please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on, it'd be a motion to reconsider the zone change. An item, because there's two items, sorry, there's two components to that item, so it'd be motion to reconsider, as long as Councilor Crampitz was on the prevailing side.
He was.
Okay, then.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the zone change on item 11.
Motion made second to reconsider item number, what was the item?
Zone change.
Zone change on the.
Eleven.
Number 11.
Question, president.
Yep, okay, on the motion.
Since we're sending back the mill overlay conversion to zoning, this would, if we kept it as is, this would put it kind of out of sync with the zone change moving forward and this kind of going back to committee. So to keep them kind of on the same page and at the same time, we'll take one vote to reconsider, to rescind it and then make a motion after that to, to approve it going back to committee, so.
Thank you. Council.
First one.
I'm sorry. Councilor Roy's next.
This is like a bouncing ball here. We keep changing our minds as to what we're doing here. You know, what are we going to accomplish by, by sending it back to zoning? It doesn't make any sense to me. I'm sorry. You know, if we don't get the vote right, do it again, we'll try it again until we get it right.
Council, okay, I'm sorry. Council Wagner.
I still haven't had it explained to me how not passing the overlay district holds up the zoning change. You can give somebody the zoning change, but you can say, no, we don't want you to have an overlay district there. But if we, now we've held it up by sending the overlay district back to the zoning committee. That's where we're holding it up. This is, this is just convoluted and confusing. There was a clear picture and understanding of what was happening before. I think this is a classic case of people not properly understanding the zoning code to begin with. It's, it's a mess. It is a mess that never needed to happen because no one understands what they're talking about anymore on any issue whatsoever. Housing. That's all we wanted was some housing. That's what the people there wanted. There were some people that didn't want housing because they maybe misunderstood what the zone residential B was. They thought it was going to be an apartment complex. That's why, that technically might be allowed under the mill conversion overlay. But I'm just, I'm, I'm done with this whole discussion. This is so just infuriating that this council can never get anything productive done ever. What meaningful things have, has this body done in the past decade? It is stagnation in this city. And, and watching the city that I've had to grow up in just falter and stumble at every step of the way has been a, it's mind boggling.
You all set?
I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, have a good evening. Any other comments from the floor? Roll call.
Okay, on the motion, on the motion to reconsider the zone change, item number 11, for reconsideration. President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
No.
Wagner.
Gone. Out of chair.
Ziegrowski.
No.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
No.
Crampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Labrie.
No.
Piniya Costello.
Yes.
Six yes. Six no. No, it fails, correct?
Six and six is defeat, right? Nope.
Wagner voted no.
I believe a tie fails.
It does.
Yeah, it doesn't get reconsidered.
It's six, it's no.
It's defeated. What's that, Councilor Brooks?
It has to be a simple majority one way or another on a vote like this. It's not a financial expenditure where we need a super majority. It's, if we have an even number for whatever reason, a tie, it's automatic, it's been like that for years with Robert's Rules of Order.
That it's been defeated, correct? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Law is in agreement, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so the motion was defeated.
The motion for reconsider is defeated, so the zone change remains passed.
Yep.
And the overlay portion goes back to zoning.
Correct.
Everybody got it?
Okay.
Okay.
We're going to move on. Welcome back.
All right, item number 12. We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a zone change application from residential A to residential B for 13,620 square feet of property located at Zero Montgomery Street for the purpose of constructing a duplex.
Councilor Balakir.
Motion that the zoning committee report be received and the zone change be approved this evening.
Motion made second to favorable zoning committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, this is a zone change application from residential A to residential B for property located at 9294 Montgomery Street for the purpose of constructing a duplex. The applicant came in and he's actually in the audience. There was some frontage questions, so that's why we needed a zone change. But everybody else seemed to be happy about it, the zone change and the plan, as I, as I mentioned before several times tonight, the planning board also voted favorably for this. So I'm in favor of the zone change for the purpose of constructing a duplex on this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Okay, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner. Ziegrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Out of chair.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniya Costello.
Yes.
Then yes.
And a motion passes.
Okay. We have a favorable report from the zoning committee. Be it ordained by the city council that the code of the city of Chicopee for the year 1991 is amended, being hereby further amended as follows. Add chapter 275 dash 73 James Street. No further business or commercial industrial development shall occur on James Street from the intersection of James Street to Memorial Drive, beginning of Syracuse, commencing February 1st, 2024 and terminating 2025 February. Motion, oh, sorry, this is a favorable committee report with a motion to withdraw.
Councilor Balakir.
This was a motion that the zoning committee report be received and that the applicant is withdrawing this proposal.
Motion made second that the zoning committee report be received and the notification that the applicant has withdrawn this proposal. On the motion.
On the motion, this was going to be a review of the proposed James Street zoning moratorium. We had some interesting comments and we also had legal give us an opinion, case law regarding zoning moratoriums. That was provided to the planning board, which voted for a negative recommendation on this. And the applicant, the other, the other consideration too, Mr. President, on this was the previous month, there was a question legally whether or not the applicant could come in with this proposal because the applicant is also a city counselor. So we had some discussion and we got a legal opinion that the applicant could come in and, and act as the applicant here, even though they were a city counselor. So legal gave us their interpretation of this and the applicant decided to withdraw this proposal. Thank you.
Councilor Costello.
Yes, I'm asking that it be withdrawn, but I am going to abstain on the vote since I was a, along with Counselor Jobos, the, an applicant. But I will be abstaining, but I'm asking that it be withdrawn and there were, excuse me, people in the area that live in this particular location on James Street that were agreeable to the withdrawal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the floor? See, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ziegrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Crampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Labrie. Piniya Costello.
Abstain.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four. Nine yes, one out of chair, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Thank you.
Two out of chair. Well, Wagner's gone, right?
Right, Wagner's gone.
All right. Wagner and Kushein are gone.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 14. Be it ordered that the rules and orders of the city council meetings shall be amended as follows. Delete regular meetings of the city council shall be held on the first and third Tuesday evening of each month, except for the months of July and August, when a single regular meeting shall be held on the first Tuesday of such months. All meetings shall convene at 7:15 PM, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If any such regular meeting shall fall on a legal holiday or elections, such meetings shall be held the succeeding Thursday evening. And in certain place thereof, regular meetings of the city council shall be held the first and third Tuesday evening of each month, except for the months of July and August, where a single regular meeting shall be held on the first Tuesday of such month, first and third Tuesday of each month. Sorry, first Tuesday of such months. All meetings shall convene at 6:30 PM, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If any such regular meeting shall fall on a legal holiday or election, such meetings shall be held on succeeding Thursday evening.
Council Ziegrowski.
Yeah, motion that the order be received and passed this evening.
Motion made second to the order be received and approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, this is something that myself and President Laflamme have been speaking about it. We met with our lawyers to try to get to a solution where we can have our meetings meet from 7:15 to 6:30. What I'd like to do is get this passed this evening. I remember Mr. Laflamme sending a letter to us saying why, and the mayor was interested in the briefing of this also. So I'm going to ask that allow Councilman Laflamme to speak on this.
Make a motion.
I need a motion to allow Councilman Laflamme to speak.
Roll call please.
Okay, President Laflamme.
Abstain.
Roy.
Yes.
Ziegrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff. Balakir.
Yes.
Crampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniya Costello.
Yes.
And the motion passes, Councilman Laflamme.
Thank, thank you. So one of the things that we were working on is the mayor's briefing versus the city council meeting. And one of the things that came out of a meeting with the attorneys and our office and was the use of special media, city council meetings for the mayor's briefing. This is inappropriate, it's not supposed to be used every two weeks for a mayor's briefing. So we, we reviewed and found, and looking at ways to consolidate as well as make it more accessible for residents and, and people. Some people in the audience told us that, you know, we shouldn't always go with the status quo just because it's there. So we did some reviewing of all this, the mayor's briefing. So after consulting with the, the law department, the mayor's briefing will become a part of our agenda, starting on August 6th of 2024. The mayor will have the opportunity to highlight some of his proposal ordinances and counselors will be having an opportunity to ask questions. Going forward, there will be no longer a special meeting of the mayor's briefing. In addition, any orders filed by the mayor will be brought up at 6:30, will be the first thing on the agenda. So a couple of things I did do, we reviewed, is we looked in other cities around, around here, majority of them, they do, they do not, any of them have mayor's briefing. We looked at Springfield, Westfield, Newton, Hoyoke, none of those have special mayor's briefing. So some of the reasons too is just two weeks ago, our last meeting, a gentleman was sitting in the audience to say, oh, I didn't know 6:30 is the mayor's briefing, I'm here for the city council meeting. And so he, he made it for the city council meeting. But the other problem is people were sitting here, they see, they hear it at 6:30, they're sitting here and then the mayor gets done at seven, 6:30, I mean, sorry, quarter to seven, and we have to wait 15, 20 minutes. And people will say, I didn't know, I'm not going to hang around, and they leave. And I don't want that to happen. So I think the, the best thing to do is to combine it with the city council. We'll have one meeting, one agenda, because the mayor has his own agenda, the city council has their agenda, plus the mayor's one. So that'll be all combined in one. We're not getting rid of the mayor's briefing, but there's also, there's also one other opportunity good about that. Somebody that wants to come to public input and say something to the mayor, they can because it's public input.[1796.88] because it's public input. So they're allowed to do that. So that's what, we're headed that way. I'm going to be announcing for the next two weeks, will take effect in August, the first week in August. There is no rules committee, this is not in our rules. We must keep in mind, this was started back several mayors ago. They used to meet in the mayor's office for the briefings. You had to go there and meet in the mayor's office, and if you wanted to ask questions on certain topics, you went to the mayor's office. Then I believe it was Mayor Cos or Bissonette decided to bring it forward and to, before our meetings. But with the open meeting law, there are certain things, we have to be very cautious what we're doing. I'm sorry you're shaking your head no on me, but I'm sorry. So what we're going to do is we're going to move forward with the help with the law department. We reviewed this, we made some calls on this to verify it. So I just want to, that's why the 6:30 is there, we're going to move the meeting there. So anybody that did come early for the mayor's briefing will know that it's the mayor's briefing as we continuously move forward in, at August, for the first meeting in August. So that's something that, that's why I'm looking to do the 6:30 tonight and get it approved. Thank you.
Right, after speaking to President Laflambeau, I support this order wholeheartedly, but I'd like to hear our clerk speak about this also. I need a motion to allow City Clerk Rattell to speak on this.
Motion to allow City Clerk Rattell to speak on this item.
I second it.
Okay, President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy. Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Keith Rattell, you have the floor.
I, I would just repeat everything your president just said, because he said everything perfectly. We're simply, the council's combining the two meetings into one to make it more efficient. And you still get your mayor's briefing, just in one meeting rather than two. With the open meeting law, it's, the law department rathers have it in one meeting rather than two. Your president's correct, many years ago, the mayor's briefing was always just in the mayor's office. I used to set up those chairs 30 years ago in the mayor's office for Mayor Chesey. And consellers, well, they were aldermen back then, would come in and you'd sit down, and the mayor would tell you as a courtesy what he's put on your agenda, and he would talk about it. And it was an open door meeting, press was invited, anybody who wanted to come was invited, but it didn't have to be a posted meeting back then, it was just put on your agenda that the mayor's briefing's at 6:30. So you'd come, go to the mayor's office, and then you'd come up to the chambers and you'd vote. It's a, it's a courtesy and it's a convenience to, back then, the Board of Aldermen, now the city council, for the mayor to show up and explain all of his orders. That way, they don't have to all go to committee, where you have to ask all your, you know, it helps move the city forward more quickly and efficiently, if you can get the questions answered right before your meeting. If there's something that needs more questioning, then of course you send it to committee. So you don't lose your briefings, the mayor's still going to come, you'd still be able to ask your questions, and it's more efficient and condenses it all into one meeting. And if the mayor can move himself along, you can start your meeting earlier. Instead of 7:15, maybe start at 7:00.
6:30.
6:30. No, I mean, once the mayor's done with his briefing, maybe you can start the remainder of your, your meeting quicker. So that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Consul Crumpets first.
Yeah, I mean, I think having it this way kind of continues transparency. I mean, I remember, you know, going to mayor's briefings in his office, and yes, the press was invited, but I think having the mayor here publicly stating why he wants these particular orders passed, especially when the public can be in the audience and view it, I think, you know, helps make it a more transparent thing, rather than saying, oh, that we had a private meeting with the mayor, and, you know, this is why he wants it. I think by having the mayor come and publicly state why he wants, you know, support on these, these items does help out. And as Clerk Rattell stated, and President Laflambeau stated, you know, if we're not satisfied with what he provides at the briefing, then we can always, you know, send it to committee. But I think having the mayor appear, you know, with the city council, or in part with the meeting, I think helps try to make it, you know, helps with that transparency of government. So, thank you.
Thank you. Consul Labrie.
When would the public input be? Be before the 6:30?
Correct. No, it'll be before the mayor's, before the city council meeting.
Okay.
Before the city council meeting. In other words, he's part of our meeting now, so it'd be before our meeting. Any other comments from the floor? Consul Cost, I mean, have a go.
So instead of public input being probably, what, around like 7:20 when we kind of normally have it, it's going to be more like 6:40-ish?
So, we're going to start our meeting at 6:30. At 6:30, right after we do all the stuff with the clerk and that, it's public input first.
Okay, so we're essentially moving it.
It'll be about 6:35, 6:40.
Yeah, so we're essentially moving it 40 minutes earlier.
Yeah, I would think the mayor's going to speak right before his orders. So if you're looking at the where on the agenda, you'd probably put that before his orders, right?
So it'll be public input.
Public input first.
Then the mayor will speak.
Yes.
Then it will be city council.
Yep. Then it goes right into the city council meeting, this way here, there's no delay of people coming and leaving.
But it's still essentially taking public input almost a full, 45 minutes early than it has been.
So our meeting's going to change here to 6:30, okay? So 6:35, I start the me, 6:30, I start the meeting, we do the roll call and all that, we do public input right after that. No different than how we do it now. We start our meeting at 7:15, about 7:20, 7:22, we have public input by the time we go through all what we need to do. It'll be the same thing. The first on the agenda will be public input. No different, if you look at your paperwork now, it says public input on top, same thing. And the mayor will be after that. So this gives the, also, yes, the mayor opportunity, people ask the mayor a question, because they don't have that now with the mayor's briefing.
Consul Costello.
Yeah, is it possible that you could do the mayor's briefing, then public input? Because then the public that's here at 6:30 would hear what the mayor is proposing and the reason why he is. And then they can make comments about that? Or would that be too disruptive? Because that's what we do now. We have the mayor's briefing. The only difference is, is we're going to add this briefing to our agenda, which is a good idea, because now it's all going to be under one, one meeting agenda. So it won't be as confusing. But I'm concerned about public input. Is it better to do the public input after the mayor speaks in regards to what his proposal is? And then have the public speak, and then go back to our agenda? I don't know. It's just that, I agree with Consul Crumpets, there is transparency, but public input is very important, and I don't know, you know, I just want to get the feeling of what the board thinks in regards to public input, and when it should be done.
I did, I did, before I made the decision to send this out, I did go out in the audience and talk to people and ask them what they were here for, and there were, there was nobody here for the mayor's briefing. All the mayor's briefing people that come to this, yes, I didn't see all you folks out in there that go to, but I did do some homework, I did walk around. It was something that, we've been working on this for a while. It's, I do not want no, you know, open meeting law violation, we've been doing very good with that lately. So that's why I'm going to continue it that way. Doesn't mean down the road, we find it to change, we could look at that.
Okay.
But I would like to leave it as is for now, and then we can change it. There's, it's not in our rules, this is a benefit that we give the mayor. It's not something that we have to do.
Right.
It is not something we have to do.
Cities don't even do it.
But we want to be, as Consul Crumpet says, we all want to be transparent, as well as everybody that's out in the audience just keeps telling us, we need to be transparent.
Yeah.
So that's the reason we're doing it.
Consul Zegarowski.
Just one question, Frank. The mayor, when he does his briefing, the public will have an opportunity after he's done to speak?
No, mayor, the briefing's first, for now.
Briefing's first.
Doesn't mean we can't change it down the road.
And after that's public hearing.
It's going to go, public input, mayor's briefing, city council meeting.
All right, okay.
Nonstop.
All right.
So one of the, and one of the things we did talk to the mayor about, because it gets to be long too, is we talked to the mayor about letting him look at his agenda, what he's bringing, his mayor's order, and if there's one in there, for example, a reappointment, he doesn't need to talk about that reappointment. We know it's him putting in that reappointment, and we know something about it, unless, but it still gives the opportunity of a city council to say, could you speak on the appointment if you want to, if it's, if it's up to that order? It's just, some of the stuff we, the mayor asks, is there any questions? And a lot of people, right here in the council, just, nobody has a question on them. So it's to keep the meeting, not to go fast, not, it's just to keep it organized and to move on to the different things on the agenda. He will talk about the most important ones, but it gives a choice to every city council to say at the end, when he's done, mayor, could you talk about number four? Mayor's order four, or five, that he didn't talk about. You have a question about an appointment, you have the right to ask him those questions. But if it's something that's not there, there's no need that, and again, you know, we hear from the public saying, you know, you know, do your homework, and I'm going to tell you, I'm here in the city hall all the time, I do my homework, I go visit the hours, I've called the mayor's office. We all get this, this thing on a Friday afternoon. We have Friday to look at it, Saturday look at it, Sunday to look at it. Monday, you can call the mayor, anything you want. Tuesday, you can go, all the way up to the meeting. So, you know, there's times, people say, oh my God, you rubber stamp it, and I always tell people, I never rubber stamped nothing, because of the fact, I do my homework. Look ahead, look ahead of what you're doing. That's the whole point. I know a lot of city councillors do that, they call ahead, and they ask questions. Just, you know, what are you spending the money on, or what are you doing this for? So we, you know, it's given to you on a Friday for a reason, so you can review it, call the department head if, hey, about us, whatever you want to call, to get your answer that you're going to have to talk about. So with that said, any other questions from the floors?
My only concern is just changing our time for city council for public input. It's, it's going to be confusing for people to adjust, and my concern is not being, I don't want to say transparent, because we will be transparent with our time, but it's just, it's been a certain time, and people are just used to that, and I don't want people to miss the opportunity because we've changed it, and now it's become too confusing.
Right, but, yeah, I get where you're coming from, but, you know, if our, when our meeting's become 6:30, they'll have, with a couple of times, okay? If, if we want, you know, down the road, we can change it. But I think leaving it at 6:30 for now, that's what we're going to talk about for the next three weeks and get it out there, because most people that come here, they come here right between the mayor's briefing and ours, so it's something we can look at.
Consul Labrie.
I just would like to make a comment on, it's going to reduce our paperwork in here.
Right. Yes. Yes. Great.
Your mic isn't on.
You make mine, you make mine up.
So because it's two meetings, and we get double the paperwork, and it says exactly the same thing, verbatim. And so I won't miss that, you know, and I'm sure the clerk won't miss that.
Consul Ballack here.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to echo my fellow councillor with the Paper Reduction Act, that that's going to help the city, and as one of the orders earlier through the mayor, there was, I believe, a request for $3,000 for paper. So that will be helpful. And as our city president also just referenced, that if we educate the public and tell them that we're changing the schedule, and we mentioned it several times, I think people will get the message. And they will, if they do want to speak, they will come. So I'm sure that, that will work out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consul Chomsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. In terms of what Consul Ariaga said, one of the things that just came to mind is, I looked at the Envision 2040 sheet, and in the second chapter, in Governance Well, it says, increasing and revamping communications. One of the things that came to mind was, if we do change this, if, when the vote happens, if there's a way that we can put this in the Herald every week to let residents know that the timing periods have changed. So it gives them a two-month courtesy period as to, look, it's going from 7:20 to 6:40, just, just for example. And the other thing I was thinking of too, is this is a great way to utilize social media to let our constituents know that there is a time change, and also within coordination with the mayor's office on their Facebook page, I feel like there are ways to let the residents know about this particular change, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's just true, Consul Zegarowski made a good point. Channel 191, Chicagobe TV, we could put a PSA out on there. So I feel like there are ways to make it known.
Correct. We, Consul, Consul Wagner is back on Zoom, is on Zoom now. Okay, any other comments from the floor? Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner. Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mr. President, I apologize, I had the wrong input, microphone set. Oh, yes.
Would you like to cast a vote?
He said yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim.
So now we have 11 yes, one no.
And a motion passes.
All right. Be it ordered that a petition to the general court accompanied by a bill for special law relating to making the charter of the city of Chicagobe gender neutral to be filed with the general court for an attested copy of this order, be it hereby is approved under clause one of section eight of article two of the amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so that the attached legislation can be adopted precisely as follows, except for clerical or editorial changes of form only.
Consul Zegarowski.
A motion to send this order to Rules Committee.
Motion made a second to send the item 15 to Rules Committee. On the motion, please.
On the motion, President Laflambeau's been working on this, and I'm going to turn it over to him, because he's more involved than any of us.
Thank you. So this is one that came out of when we had the committee to look at our charter review. There was a couple, as was mentioned, and we did the mayor's four-year term, and these were a couple more. So our attorney, the law department, and thank you to Representative Shari Aiga, am I right?
Ariaga.
Ariaga. She helped us through the state, I'm sorry, she helped us through the state writing, getting us some that were already done, and she helped us get these to help us write them. It's just a format, that's why we want to clear it up and put it the way we want. Okay? So that's what this is for. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Okay, President Laflambeau. President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zgarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
12 yes.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that a petition to the general court accompanied by a bill for special law relating to the recall of any holder of elective office in the city of Chicopee to be filed in general court with an attested copy of this order. Being is hereby is approved under clause one of section eight of article two of the amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts so that the attached legislation be adopted precisely as follows, except for clerical or editorial changes of form only.
Counselor Zgarowski?
Same, make the motion that Counselor Laflamme speak on this.
You want to send it to Rules first?
Send it to Rules Committee, I'm sorry.
Motion made, second, to Rules Committee for a public hearing. On the motion?
Motion for you to speak?
Okay, make a motion.
A motion to allow President Laflamme to speak.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded. President Laflamme?
Up seeing.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zgarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
12 yes.
And a motion passes.
We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, handicap parking, 202 Meeting House Road. Susan Goff?
Counselor Goff?
Motion that the order be received and referred to the ordinance committee.
Motion made, second, the order be received and sent to the ordinance committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
Take it up in committee.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zgarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
12 yes.
And a motion passes.
We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, 25 mile-per-hour speed limit New Ludlow Road.
Counselor Costello?
Thank you. Motion that the order be received and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing and a first reading, please.
Motion made, second, that the ordinance committee be sent to the ordinance committee for a public hearing and a first reading. On the motion, please.
Yes, this is, this will be taken up as a discussion.
Thank you.
At the ordinance committee.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zgarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
12 yes.
And a motion passes.
We have an order to add to the following in schedule, isolated stop sign Telegraph Ave.
Counselor Costello?
Motion that the order be received and sent to the ordinance committee for a first reading and a public hearing.
Motion made, second, the order be received, take its first reading, refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing. On the motion?
Yes, this is self-explanatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zgarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
12 yes.
And a motion passes.
We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, isolated stop sign Telegraph Avenue.
Motion that the order?
Counselor Costello?
Thanks. Motion that the order be received and sent to the ordinance committee for a first reading and a public hearing.
Motion made, motion that the order be received, take its first reading, refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zgarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yes.
Labrie?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
12 yes.
And a motion passes.
Okay. We have a renewal of a poppy permit to be held by the VFW 625 of various locations, May 25th and November 2024. Michael Brunetti?
Counsel Brooks?
Make a motion that the renewal be received and granted this evening with any current restrictions.
Motion made, second, the order be, the proposal ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, the renewal of a poppy permit be received and approved this evening with restrictions.